But the truth is, is that no matter where you put the bricks and mortar, we're going to be very close. It's going to be very close in all of those costs. To implement technology in academic programming, this is the one that I told our group last week that the school board here, and I know we're all in different places, but we're going to have to get our heads around that if we want to do, kind of we've got the three legs of the stool. We've got the academics, the technology, and facilities. If we want to accomplish what we're setting out to accomplish, it's going to create a situation where we don't have the funds on an ongoing basis to accomplish things over a 10-year-plus decade or 10-year-plus plan. We have enough funds to probably get us a long ways, but that doesn't show vision. And so part of what we're going to ask the board is to consider, where are we at on our taxes and where are we at with the amount of investment that our community puts in per student? So this one got a gasp by our guiding coalition team. And while I would want to be very clear with the community, these are the voter-approved levies per pupil. So if you look at Shakopee, it's $7.24, and Edina, $2,288 per student. Basically, the difference between the large schools, which is one of the models that has a lot of legs behind it, you can't expect Shakopee at $7.24 to necessarily have the same results in all of the categories I talked about before when the playing field is not equal. Where it's option differentiating is right here. That's the difference. And so one of the things that our administrative team is going to talk to the board about and look forward to is a conversation about, you know, no one expects that Shakopee, a fiscally conservative area, is all of a sudden going to become Minnetoka, Ezetere, Edina. So I want to be clear on that. But I think also, I want to be clear that your administrative team as a collective group felt strongly that we're going to need to come to you and do some serious dialogue around especially the operational things in technology and so forth. It's the people, it's the devices, it's the, you know, all of those kinds of things. So I think that that would be important for us to keep in mind as we move forward. I started out this conversation about perceptions and I, again, I know we're going to hear, once you start the funnel, once you start the funnel of public opinion and then we start shrinking from four to a preferred choice, one of the things that we need to talk about regular, often, and over and over again is that the whole newspaper, the whole public opinion survey, all that work comes from the people. It's from the people. And as a board, we're going to have a lot of legwork to do coming up real soon, but so forth, it's 100% the work of the facilities group and all the action teams. The other thing I thought to remind our folks is that, you know, when you think about option differentiating, there were some comments that the homework brought forward to us as we looked at this category of perceptions. And that was, for example, that the community already told you they only want, that it failed because of one reason, and that was because they want to keep the community together and that's it. So you really shouldn't bring forward any other plans that would have other options. And I wanted to remind folks, when we did the autopsy survey of the community on, okay, folks, we get it, we heard you. Now tell us, what are the reasons that the last one didn't go? And you can see here, there's probably a dozen plus multiple, multiple reasons why it did not go. So just as we have to keep an open mind and flexible, we have to also kind of dispel rumors and myths. And there were some of those that came out in the questions of the guiding coalition. And they were just truly rumors. And so we're trying to squelch the rumors so that our guiding team can give us the best advice possible. The category of details and design, there were, one of the options includes two campuses and it includes one mascot. Because there isn't another perfect model that is like that in Minnesota, our cabinet or our district administrators got together and we talked about, okay, if this model now in the funnel gets more serious and it's getting down to the top couple of options, what are the possibilities and considerations we'd have to look at? And we looked at, you know, each campus having four classes with the same options. We talked about electives being different at each campus. We reminded people that when you set a schedule back in the late, well, in the upcoming months here, what the students select is what drives the schedule. And so we have to make sure we have a broader, you know, array of choices. But if students are picking music production, which I know is going to be an exciting new opportunity, and if they're loading that up, then we need more music teachers in music production, for example. So important for people to know that, just as it would be important in a two-campus, one-mascot system. The interest drives the classes being offered. And that really has, it's not option differentiating. It's one or two campuses. It makes no difference. Who does that work? Our counselors do it now, our administrators do it now. If we had two campuses, one mascot, it might be like some of us who went in a college city that had multiple colleges and you could take classes at either one. I took some of those and I will tell you, I didn't like making a bunch of moves. I'd do one a day, but more than that, it just really wasn't realistic. I also think that kids might be, or our young people would be very much the same. They might make the one change, but it isn't like people are going to go flying back forth, back forth on the zip line between the two campuses. Co-oping athletics and activities, just meaning that, you know, you have this multi-campus approach, but the one mascot, it really is then that these kids all come together and they'll play football or volleyball or run cross-country, that kind of thing. And then possibly longer passing time. I was kind of joking about the zip line. But the same thing goes in colleges where there's multiple colleges in a college town. They actually try to work together on a little bit longer between class periods. Might be that we look at a more college-type of a setting if this option, scheduling if this option were selected. And then the academic and tech teams, we talked about that. Teachers, staff are currently working hard at recommendations. We're working with the city, or excuse me, we're working to expand the early childhood level clarity and all that with the early childhood. And we'll talk about the city in just a second and some possibilities there. And that's it. So I just wanted to make sure that the community had an opportunity to hear what the guiding coalition has been a part of. And then now, maybe if we could hear from either, I'd asked Matt and Sean maybe to be prepared to talk about guiding coalition or any thoughts they had, and then Mary then maybe open it up to any board members who would like to add. Okay, Sean.
One thing that, the feedback that I received after the guiding coalition from some of the guiding coalition members was that what they are learning is that, and not to be polite of it, the hominuses over there, but that it's complicated. And there maybe isn't a perfect solution. There are a lot of good solutions that have challenges associated with each one. And I believe that the guiding coalition is thinking very carefully about all of this information. And I'm anxious for the next meeting. I liked, I thought it looked really well, so.
Well, I was anxious for the next topic apparently, because I jumped right to you and Matt. So who else that was at the guiding coalition?
I'll chime in. And help me, Rod, or somebody else who was there. We asked the teams to get together as groups, provide feedback. I think it was five areas. I can come up with four. The fit of academics and technology to any of the models. Kind of an appetite for cost. A 10-year-plus view. Campuses versus mascot. And what am I forgetting?
Is it amenities, right?
Amenities, thank you, amenities. So as I said that evening, and my feedback for the rest of the board who wasn't there, I thought the meeting was very good, very productive. Based upon the guiding coalition's meetings that I attended, I thought it was the most substantive and most hands-on, most engaging. Now, I did miss a meeting, so maybe it's happened before. But I felt it was a very productive meeting and the teams were not unanimous, but there was a lot of commonalities and similarities in many of these points. And that to me says that the group is all digesting this information and not coming to a single conclusion, but they're all giving this the time and attention that we would like them to, and they're going to be very helpful to us in the process. So that was a very, very good meeting.
Maybe I would ask Chuck. Chuck, as you've kind of watched the guiding coalition, what role do you see them playing in helping our school board kind of as we try to make some difficult decisions?
Well, certainly consultative. And, you know, I would agree, truthfully, as I watched this last time, we've kind of gotten over that hump and now we're starting to see that there are many more similarities and commonalities than there are differences. But there are still differences. And as Sean said, maybe there isn't a perfect plan. I don't know that there's going to be anything that we are going to offer in the future that's going to gain approval of 37,000 people. You know, not everybody's going to be at the same place at that time. You know, but as long as we are working toward those commonalities, I think we're going to be in pretty good shape.
Angela Scott, did you have anything you want to say?
I was going to say a lot of what Roddy said, where we're starting to see a lot of really good dialogue. There was a lot of good discussion about, you know, one mascot, two mascots change. How would that work? Also some discussion on how much is this going to cost and where are we at with this? And I think people are starting to come together. I think they're starting to have, like Roddy said, some common themes, but not 100% agreeant. So I think it's good dialogue that's really starting to take place here, so.
I don't think I can add anything. Yeah, except just to echo what Sean said, that I think some eyes are opened a little bit wider now as to how complex it is when you have to now gather the pieces together and try to, you can get a different picture depending on which pieces you're putting together, which is very interesting to watch happen.
Matt, did you want to come and deal on the facilities?
Yeah, Mary and I attended that meeting and it was a very, very passionate meeting. A lot of great feedback, a lot of people who have some, a lot of people changed their minds throughout the process of their work. A lot of people did, a lot of people still advocate for what they walked in advocating for, and that's fine. I just wanted to overall say thank you to that group who put in a lot of hours. I think it'll be total 30, 33 hours. And that's just the formal meeting time, not the times they get stopped at K foods or sitting around the fire pit or whatnot, having informal conversations. I thought it was a great group who really had a fairly monumental task to go through learning about building trusses and enrollment projections of why it's important to have the configuration. So I just want to say, share a heartfelt thank you with them. And hopefully the community reads their work and reacts.
Some of the comments that were made about it. I think the biggest frustration was the fact that it took them a long time to learn why things are done a certain way and they're concerned about the rest of the community not knowing that, and we, you know, how do we teach them what they need to know? A lot of them had concerns with the fact that the board and the administration said nothing to them and they felt like they were kind of wandering in the desert sometimes. And I basically told them my tongue was about ready to bleed from biting it to keep from making comments because we wanted it to be as from them and not from us. Although some people felt that it was predetermined and what the results would be. I did also let them know that regardless of their opinions on what they think is best, the board will make its decision based on a lot of their discussion that they've heard and the input that we get, but the decision that we make will be what we think is best for the students of this district, not for any other reason but that. They were also amazed at the complexity of things and how one thing affects another thing. And they also felt that we need to really impress on the public that this is just not a high school decision, this is a K-12 or actually early childhood decision. I think that was pretty much the summary of the group. But they're, most of them were very pleased to be part of the process. Any other comments on this?
No, just that the community could expect to help or, obviously the newspaper public survey is out, or public opinion surveys out there. They can also, we're going to be teeing up a telephone survey, just like the city does their telephone surveys to get the opinion of their people. We'll do the same, and that's a scientific research-based type of a survey. And we'll set the parameters and the questions shortly, with the understanding that before the Christmas break or winter holiday break, that we would have, we'd fire that up and try to get that done so that in January and February, the board will have to laser it in on one option and then look at whatever amenities might come forward with the city and all that work that we're doing there, too.
Anything else?
I just like to add for one thing. I just want to say thank you to all of the task force members that have put in their time. And also to Chris, Elsara, and everybody that's put together. The publication was fabulous. I rushed it out right away on my paper. So it was a fun read. So thank you.
Now to what Rod's been waiting for, 5.4.
I must be really excited about this next item.
Discussing of the joint facilities committee with the city council and the school board.
Thanks. I'll tee it up and then I'm going to turn it over to Sean and Matt this time again. Sarah's going to pull up the, shortly, pull up the, there's one slide from our meeting with the city that I thought would be important. This school board has talked about for some time going back to the 10-year deferred maintenance plan and what we were going to do with CFC. And then also the vision for early childhood, the vision for programming. And then at the same time, we've got all of our surveys out there or public opinion survey in the community right now talking about what do we need as a community? So Mayor Tabke and the city administration and two of the council members and the two school boards, myself and our cabinet, a few cabinet members, met, meet as a subcommittee with the city. And the last meeting, Mayor Tabke presented some thoughts and I'd like Matt and Sean to share your recollections and your thoughts of what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, thank you. I'm going to go first and then Sean's going to correct it when I have this. This is the long-term vision that Mayor Tabke shared, a way to expand the use and the functionality of the community center by frankly, the city or in some sort of joint partnership utilizing this building. Using, utilizing this building for the more social, arts-focused, health and human services-focused programs. And you can see them up there on the screen. I know Scott Swanson's all excited about the Ruff Theater. But a lot of great ideas that could be used. Housing this building, as we've talked about this building, if we wanted to keep it a school or make it into more of a academically viable building, there would be a huge cost associated with that. That cost would probably not be as significant if it's being repurposed for businesses. What that would do is it would free up the existing community center to become an athletic complex. And the vision that was discussed, and this is all conceptual at this point though, would be to expand a second seat device, some sort of field house or bubble, possibly working with the tennis association. They already have some plans in flight to build a public-private tennis center. Maybe that could be brought to the community center land and maybe be on our site. So this is just the long-term vision and concept. And I guess what I'd like to say is, this is kind of a lot to take in, in this meeting. What I think, and Rod, correct me if I'm wrong, you're looking for is governance direction to have staff start to look into what it would look like, what we would need to do to replace the function that is in this building. But it's things for us to consider as we're going through referendum planning when we get back from our survey participants. If a second seat device or turf, if there are things that are highly needed from the school district side, how would we want to include that in the referendum or maybe it's post-referring or something like that? So it's something for us to talk.
Not much. I guess I would just like to add, it does seem ambitious. And I just want, I just want to add that I believe that there's a difference between spending and investing. And I believe when you invest in your home or your community or your schools that you do so with the expectation that there will be a return on investment, whether that's the quality of life, improved test scores, or property value increases. So as a resident of Shakopee and as a member of the school board, I'm really excited about his plan. Although I do want to just reiterate at this point, it's conceptual. Nothing has been decided. And obviously, we as a community and as a school need to have in vivo discussions in order to move forward.
So part of, I think, our walk away from that meeting was that the city would have a conversation around, does this warrant further, this, further investigation, further discussion on the city's part? Does it warrant us, is this teasing enough that it's worthy of us kind of putting in our, some of our time to put together some price points, some options? And then of course, the city is already planning on doing a public survey and I assume some of this would go on their survey. We have a survey in the community right now that asks a lot of those questions. And then certainly, if we get any of these things rise to the top and we bring it to the community on the scientific survey, we could ask some of those questions too, to find out what the community's wishes are.
Just one thing I'd neglected to say was, one of the important takeaways was also to involve Scott County. Because a lot of the health and human services function would be something that would be driven by or funded by the county. So that's yet another part to bring.
You know, when you mentioned the county too, I think it was unanimous around the table, which is really an anomaly in and of itself that we all could be on the same page. But it was that we agreed that this gem of a place can't disappear, that whether it's boiler issues or HVAC or whatever, somebody has to stand up and take this to the next level so that it becomes a usable resource for our community. It carries too much cultural and historic importance. And so I think that having the discussion, if in fact we've outgrown the instructional teaching and learning in this building, looking at this list, are those things that are, you know, can't do everything, but we can do anything, we got to prioritize? And are those priorities that our community needs? And if so, is there a way then that we can leverage and partner with the city to make some of these important things happen?
Any comments? I personally think it's very, we're very well worth doing a little more research on to see if it will be feasible. Because I agree with you that this building has a lot of history to it and I'd hate to see that history distorted over to tear down this building. There's just too many memories, too much history. Just, this carries, this building is one of the most important buildings in the city of Shakopee and I'd like to see it continued in use. Is everyone in agreement to go forward with that? Or do people have concerns about that?
I guess I'm a little confused. Is it in place of having ECFP here and all, and preschool and all that versus in addition to what we already have here, make me room for some of this?
No, it would be that we've decided that it's outgrown its instructional life and that we would move our programming based on redesign either to neighborhood schools or as a center.
Anything else? Mike? It's a lot, it's a different concept to wrap your arms around. But I think that's what we're pursuing. We'll go to new business discussion. 7.1 is a presentation of increased opportunities for students with group clubs and activities. And we've added the chess club, the drama club trip, and the deaf and English language class. Chip for the discussion.
I asked John and Jay if we'd come up to the table as well. We're, we've had a double team, this variety of clubs. We've got ten or so clubs and activities that we want to present to you. They've given us a charge to increase opportunities for kids. And John and I have been listening to kids and parents and other people. I think we have one young man that's been waiting here an hour to hear his club getting one up. So we're here to run through a variety of those clubs. You've got them in your packets. We'll touch on each one. If you want some more explanation of each one, we're happy to give that to first reading. So we're looking for some direction. And you'll see that number of them, most of them follow the standard six-question format of what's the purpose, club goals, leadership structure, decision-making process, any sponsored activities they're going to do, any fundraising or costs that, you know, they could foresee. And that's how we usually lay most of these. I think almost all of them want to follow that. One follows an old structure that I've used in the past, which we may send them back to restructure their proposal. But I'm going to start with three of them and John's going to jump in on a few because we've each kind of shepherded a few of them through. The first one I'm going to touch on is robotics. There's been a lot of interest in starting robotics here at, as a club in the school district. And there's a group called First Robotics that is a nationwide group. They've got a pretty strong foothold in the state. And they put out a robotics competition. And the idea is that they want this robotics competition to have all the pageantry of an athletic event and state tournament-type event. And just, they've got a real strong structure in place to actually go out and help recruit community partners. If you look on the proposal, they talk about their budget for the robotics, still being about $10,000. Part of the First Robotics mission is they go out and they come and help you find sponsors. And we've got a couple of companies already that want to donate that probably cover that cost of running that club here at Shakopee. So that's, and then those companies usually provide mentors as well. We'll have an in-house mentor. We have a new teacher, Chris Praschino, that is, he's got a passion in this area. He's run a club before. His father's run a club in another high school. He's a foster arts teacher as well. So again, we've got, finally got some people to have, we've got a lot of other things like this going on, but this is one that, kind of when I came here, I'm like, boy, with all the engineering and project through the WAKE classes, I was surprised that we didn't have this. So it's nice to fill this hole. So some kids have come forward with the proposal. We've got some staff on board. We think we've met, you know, done our due diligence and I'm ready to, you know, recommend that we bring this on board. So I don't know if you want to talk about each one or if you want me to keep going.
Well, because there's so many, maybe we should just go.
Well, I'll keep going.
No, no.
I already want to kick it.
Ask if you try, otherwise you're going to go six, seven deep in this. Any questions on this?
Yep.
I don't necessarily have a question, but this is one that I am championing as well. And I just want to do a little shout-out to a remarkable student of ours, Serena Fisher, who brought this to my attention and I passed it along. And she has done herself a lot of footwork to get this started. And she's a very impressive young girl and I'm very excited that we're to get this.
I just have a question. Are these similar to the programs offered in Jordan and Harley?
I believe they have programs as well. I'm not, I believe they each have a, most of the schools around the area have a First Robotics team. And just to give you a short example of how this works, right after the first of the year, they have like a big reveal of what is the game. And they give everybody the parts and they give you about $6,000 of the parts and they give you the game and you have, I think it's six or eight weeks to build your robot. Everything from design, build, program, all of that. And then you have to seal it up on that last date and then it gets shipped off to the competition. And then you compete and it is, at the University of Minnesota, if you go there, they got Williams Arena as a big, you got pit crew kids. You got, you got marketing kids involved. You got, you know, the kids that like, you know, forge metal and, you know, the welders. You got the, you know, again, you get a little bit of everything. So they all work together to get their team to fruition. So it's real cool and real-world application, so.
Anything else on this one? Thank you.
Yeah.
The next group that I'm bringing forward is the faith club group. And very similar to the, kind of an offshoot of, we have a fellowship, a Christian athletes group. But that's geared more towards student, student athletes. And we had a group of students, I have about, you know, about a dozen students from East Junior High that wanted to start a club and just talk about their faith and supporting each other. And, you know, I talked to them about, you know,